961 Peninsular Drive in Gallatin and Mr. Chairman and Board Members, Dr. Langford, thank you for allowing me just a few minutes to speak. First, I want to say the reason that my wife and I wear these T-shirts, you may ask, what does that mean? I've had many people ask what that means, and it means that I'm unashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ, where it's the power of salvation for everyone who believes. So that's why we wear these shirts. My family has a long legacy of attending and graduating from Sumner County Public Schools. We're so grateful that a short while back this body wisely determined to properly return the named Christmas break to the calendar instead of the generic winter break. And I really don't understand why there's been a move to take away the named Christmas break. It's the Christmas season for which this school system has taken a break in observance for the Christmas season, ever since the history of this, of the Sumner County Schools. The celebration is the, it recognizes the birth of Jesus Christ, God made flesh, the One who entered this world to bring light to the darkness, hope and salvation to mankind. There is no compelling reason to take the name Christmas off the calendar. In fact, this issue may seem small, but it would only serve to send us down a slippery slope even further away from our heritage of history and our faith in the One true On behalf of my fellow residents, do I say would overwhelmingly agree with my position, I implore you, please, do the right thing and keep Christmas on the calendar. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Joanna Daniels? Just to clarify, not related, in case anyone's wondering.
All right, Joanna Daniels, I'm sorry, do I state my address?
Name and address.
Joanna Daniels, 1597 Boardwalk Place, Gallatin. So I'm here to talk about two things, and that is the contract for Dr. Langford. I would ask that you definitely do not approve this contract, and there are numerous things that, the reason why you shouldn't be is, one, he just had a raise that went effective July 1st, and this would give him another raise. And I could be wrong, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of many teachers that get two raises in a year. And therefore, if they don't get two raises in a year, I don't know why Dr. Langford should get two raises in a year. Also, this would make it so that he makes more money than the governor of Tennessee. And I mean, that's a lot of money. And, you know, also, this contract doesn't have any accountability. You know, I just got off, came off of the library board, and we were responsible for hiring and terminating library directors. And we were able to fire them if they didn't go, if they went against policy. Well, this contract has no accountability. If he were to go against the policies that you guys create because you are his employer, the only way he can get fired is if he does something criminal. Well, it shouldn't come down to that. If he's going to be your employee, then he should be held accountable to your policies, and if he doesn't follow them, just like any other employee, you guys should be able to fire him. Also, in the two years that he's been in this position, there has been no improvement in literacy. Our test scores are still below 50%. Enrollment in public schools in Sumner County are down, and they've been declining. And a lot of this, when I speak with people, is due to the curriculum that he actually brought in, called Wit and Wisdom, that has been talked about numerous times on the news and everything about inappropriate material. Because some of the books that are in that curriculum contain rape, suicide, marital affairs, and other inappropriate materials. This is something that has been talked about numerous times. And this Wit and Wisdom curriculum that everyone was like, yay, I'm going to bring in, which by the way, he brought in without a board vote, while Dell Phillips was still the director of schools, has done nothing to help our children of Sumner County. And then also, you know, you know, I've had, when I was a board member, I had numerous people disagree with me. I never resorted to name-calling at all. And unfortunately, there have been posts and public comments where he has resorted to name-calling. That's unbecoming of a professional. And so, this contract, honestly, if it got approved, would be horrible for Sumner County, but it would also unfortunately make you guys look foolish, because you would have an employee that you can't even fire if he doesn't listen to you. And then, lastly, Christmas. You know, most of you ran on a platform of conservative, of Christian. Those of you that are in the odd districts are coming up for reelection. I'm just going to say, you know, most people here in Sumner County, I mean, I just moved here in 2018, they claim to be conservative Christians, I mean, there's a church or two on every block. You might be risking your seat if you change it to winter break. Just trying to give you some words of wisdom. Thank you so much.
My name is Chris Gillespie. I live at 1237 Overton Circle here in Gallatin, and I've been a Gallatin resident now for five years. I want to thank each of you for your service. You know, I come from, I was born in the nation's capital. I grew up in PG County. My sister has been a principal for 20 years. My niece is a teacher. I am a business owner. I also have a strong academic background myself. I have a graduate degree in higher education from an Ivy League school, so I can tell you how much I appreciate education, the opportunities that it brings for every individual, and how it all gives us an opportunity to raise, you know, our level of standard of excellence, and just raise our ability as individuals. So, there were two things I wanted to talk about. The first thing really is, I really want to discuss just quickly the merits of the Merry Christmas issue that we're talking about here. You know, I come from a world where political correctness is a stronghold. It's a little bit difficult, so let me just read this. "We live in a world where political correctness sometimes threatens to overshadow cultural and deeply religious celebrations." Let me just say, as far as Christmas is concerned, none of you would ever have considered making this accommodation necessary of Hanukkah, Diwali, Ramadan. You wouldn't consider asking them to back down from their religious holiday and take it off because it wasn't inclusive. I want you to consider that. If hearing someone say Merry Christmas, and that offends you or triggers you, it probably has more to do with your politics than your faith. Now, I'm quoting NPR, PBS, and Ameris Poll that revealed that Merry Christmas remains the favorite seasonal greeting for 60% of Americans, with only 31% preferring happy holidays. Let me go on. "Progressives in education believe that organized religion is an obstacle to getting their values like DEI or CRT, especially Critical Race Theory, adopted by everyday Americans. Stamping out cherished traditions hardly promotes inclusion and is not the least bit welcoming. Religious holidays, again, whether Christmas, Hanukkah, Diwali, Ramadan, you think you would get this, you wouldn't get pushed back if you did this for Ramadan? Or others, are important and meaningful events for those who observe them and should not be considered offensive to those who do not." Without using the phrase "war on Christian," excuse me, "war on Christmas," we're essentially drawing a battle line in a very old debate that is not just about the 25th of December or the winter break in general, but it's a fundamental disagreement over whether the United States is a secular or Christian country. So I would implore you to remember, again, you would not ask this accommodation for Ramadan, Diwali, or Hanukkah, but you seem very open to making this accommodation for Christianity under the name of Christmas, the name meaning the Mass of Christ, Chris-miss. So might I make the, implore you, please, to keep Christmas break? You know, we took out the Ten Commandments, we thought it wasn't a big deal, and now we have a lot of difficulty in the quality of the kids that are coming in and the problems that they're doing, not knowing how to honorably treat their fellow men, which is what the last six commandments talk about, because they're not reminded of it. My sister talked about how difficult it was to manage all the problems that were coming in to the PG County Schools, a hot mess. And for teachers and administrators, it's a difficult job. It's a very... But taking out religion to accommodate a few...
Yeah, you're out of time. Bob Brown? All right.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Jessica Kershaw. My residency is 430 Flintlock Court, Nashville, Tennessee. No longer a Sumner County resident, but I have gone to Sumner County Schools my whole life. I'm speaking on behalf of my younger self, my mother who cannot be here right now because she is injured, her friends, mothers of students who have gone to Sumner County Schools, on behalf of Sophie Ballinger, who can no longer be with us today. I know that it's not Dr. Langford's fault that the culture at Portland Middle School is the way it is today. No, it's not your fault, Chairman. I know it's like, it has existed decades before you guys have maybe had your tenure here, but it is a pervasive culture of bullying from students, from teachers. It has been going on since I was attending there, 2002 to 2003, like, I'm sorry, it's very difficult. This is in reference to perhaps extending the contract for Dr. Langford. I would like his contract to be extended if there's something that can be done about the culture that's going on. Like, the student shouldn't be able, shouldn't be taking their life. Like, it shouldn't get to a point where, like, kids are taking their lives. It shouldn't get to a point where I have to get sent to an institution because I'm being bullied. It shouldn't get to a point where, like, I spent years of my life refusing to change out in the locker rooms, accepting zeros in gym class because of the inaction of the principals, the inaction of Barbara Denny, who I don't know if she's still there or not, but it's just been a culture that's been building and building for years and years, and now a student is dead. And I just would like something to be done. I'd like there to be, I don't know if there's an investigation, I don't know if there's something that can be done. And it's not just on you, the onus is not on you, it's on all of us, everyone. If you see something, say something. If there's something going wrong, don't ignore it. Don't just say, shake hands with your bully, be friends with them, look, make them look each other in the eye, and then turn a blind eye to everything else that happened. Like, I've spent years, like, I have a good life now, but she didn't get that chance. A lot of people don't. And I guess if it's all I do today is get you guys to think about it, to consider it, to consider what you can do, whether it's screening the candidates better, like, screening the, get a counselor in there that actually cares. The counselor I had, Charlotte Lee, got harassed and bullied out. She worked, she is the only one who actually cared about me, and Barbara Denny bullied her out of her position. She was, I can't find her anywhere on Facebook, social media.
I appreciate your comments, I really do, but I need you to not disrespect people on this panel.
Okay. I didn't call her any names, and it's anything offensive, I'm just, it is what happened. It's, it's another fact that me...
I understand. All right, thank you.
Okay. Is my time over? Is that...
The light's still on. If you're going to, if you're going to continue to speak about an agenda item, yes, you're right, it doesn't sound like you're on an agenda item.
Well, my agenda is okay, my agenda is don't continue the contract.
You can, you can continue, but please keep those individual names out. All right, please.
Okay, all right. So I guess in light of recent events, in light of the inability for board members and teachers to perhaps call what's going on in the schools, I vote to not, to discontinue the contract. Don't sign it. Everything else that everyone said has been on point too. You know, I don't live here anymore, it's been a few years, but I support them too. If nothing can be done, then let's get some fresh blood in here then. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McLeod? My name is Mike McLeod. I live at 102 Tealba Trail, Hendersonville. We, my wife and I have lived in Hendersonville for 44 years, and we've lived in the same place, we're living in it now for 35 of those. As far as the Christmas versus the winter break, I mean, I can't say any more eloquently than, than all the people that's spoken before me. It is honoring Christ, and that, you can call it whatever you want to in your own personal house, but it's always going to be Christmas break. As far as the contract goes, the way I read it, and I'm not an expert on contracts, but the way I read it, it pretty well gives carte blanche to the school director. No offense, sir. It's a four-year extension. After the next cycle, some of you people may not even be here. So you're soon going to saddle the next board with that contract. To increase it to the amount you're asking for, as one of the ladies said, that's going to be more than what our governor makes. The, the way I read it, the only way basically you can terminate him is if he has some type of disability, that he can't perform his job. My dad was the fifth person hired at a plant up in Macon County in the early 70s, and he was charged with putting the plant together, and he was working 15, 16, 17 hours a day. And I asked him, why was he working that hard? Aren't you a boss? And he goes, "You never ask your employee to do something that you wouldn't do yourself." And I have used that in my lifetime. I started out as a bill clerk in a trucking company, went all the way up to an owner. I was the first one there and the last one to leave. I never asked my employees. Yet this contract has no performance standards, it has no moral standards, you're asking the teachers to sign contracts with all these things in them, and they're held to these staff standards, but you're asking the leader, or not having the leader sign the same thing. I would be embarrassed to sign such a document. I would not accept it. I would, I would want the same performance standards as the people under me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Broadway?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Broadway. I live at 160 South Tunnel in Portland. Briefly, I will talk about Christmas versus winter break. Yes, we have Christmas during that break. We also have New Year's, sorry, better, okay. We also have New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, which are federal holidays that fall in that break. If, like, we want to talk about whether it's Christmas or it's winter, and whether it's because we have Christmas and that's why that break exists, if, like, if it, if that's the case, then let's go back to school before New Year's, right? Like, we can have that same argument, right, at the end of the day. Personally, I believe in Jesus, great guy, right? But at the end, at the end of the day, we, we live in a community with different faiths that live here. We have a high student needs population, we have, you know, different people that exist, not just evangelical Christians, okay? I went to Moody Bible Institute downtown Chicago. I graduated with a fourth degree in family ministry, okay? That, that's my background at the end of the day. I also choose to recognize that other people don't believe the same thing I do, and I, and I believe we should have empathy and respect for those people. I'll now leave at that. I also want to talk about whether or not we do a raise or an extension. I do think we need a raise after being at the meeting last week, and actually getting to understand that we are underpaying this position in our, in our state. The reality is that if we want to have competitive people show up for the job, you have to offer competitive wages, and I believe that that is something that we should be doing at the end of the day. Whether or not I believe Langford, or agree with everything Langford does, is obviously in question, right? I do want to also say that I, with the contract, I do think there needs to be stipulations. I don't, again, I'm new to this, I don't know, understand laws and contracts and all that specifically, but I do think we need to have some checks and balances for this position in general, so I think we should, the reason I want to extend the contract is because we have big-ticket things happening, and at the end of the day, I want playgrounds done, I want safety for all of our students in our buildings and in the athletic department and all of that kind of stuff. And when you put new leadership in those positions, it sets everything back. We're already, we're really behind on ADA compliance with playgrounds. The three things that I think we should find him accountable for, and again, I don't know how legally or what that looks like, I think he should be responsible for teacher retention. Our teachers are not staying, they're moving. We go to Benny Bill's, we are without a third grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, and we just got a music teacher. Okay? That's a problem. That's a big problem. I also think, as Joanna said, and Joanna and I don't agree on a lot of things, but we do, I do agree on the literacy problem. I was in an IEP meeting for my son who is dyslexic, and I asked about third grade retention. He has autism as well. And I, they said, "Don't worry about it, because he has a reading IEP, he gets to go right on through." Which means at the end of the day, the numbers that you guys are being given and you're being promoted are not fully accurate for all of the students in our community. I want to remind you that our mission that you guys have on here, hopefully it will reload, is we believe in an inclusive culture that embraces diversity, gives equal access to each child, promotes responsibility, and supports positive self-esteem. If our kids cannot read, they do not have self-esteem, and I can tell you that for my little eight-year-old, okay? We need to do something about our curriculum. And I do think Langford is responsible for what our curriculum looks like, and our kids are failing at reading. And not just the ones who are getting put through, but our ones that are with IEPs and all of that. So I do think that is something that should be put into our contract in that space. And then, I also think we need to have fiscal responsibility. There's a lot of stuff going on in regards to where money's being spent, how it's being spent, if things get held back, rolled over, put into reserve funds, how all that's being done. Things were pulled off the internet for a while. I think it is something that the leader of this county should be way more transparent with how our funds are being spent. And I think somehow, if we can get those things put in there, I do think we should extend, but I do think the contract should be amended somehow, if that's possible. I sat through a really long commission meeting last night, and there's a lot of amending and things like going, that goes on and back and forth, so I don't know if that's a possibility here. I really don't. This is new to me. I don't have a choice but to fight, so I hope you guys see that.
Thank you. Chairman, can we ask to get the clock back working? I think that will help our speakers.
Well, I think there's an issue with the clock.
Oh, okay.
Where it's not working, so it's, it's counting down, so the microphone is working.
Yeah.
So as soon as it cuts off, that's five minutes, but the clock right now isn't working as far as the time is.
I just want to give them a chance to know where they're at in timing.
Good evening. My name is Jana Novak. I just want to thank you first for your service. I live at 120 Jameson Place in Hendersonville. I am an attorney, I am a former business owner, and I'm here to speak about the director's contract. I believe as board members that you have a fiduciary duty to the school, the students, and the taxpayers. Why are you giving the director a raise and extending his term only two years into his four-year term? His contract ends July 2027. Why would you extend it now? Normal business practices would require an evaluation of his performance at the end of his term, and then determine whether or not to renew it. That should be done in 2027 by whatever board is in place at that time. Furthermore, increasing his salary and benefits beyond what he has already agreed to is financially irresponsible and a disservice to the taxpayers footing the bill. Many homeowners cannot afford another tax increase. It is irresponsible governing and looks more like political maneuvering and an ethical violation. Our students and our taxpayers deserve better.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Cavan, and I live at 1167 Plantation Pass in Gallatin, Tennessee. I want to thank the chairman and the members of the board for giving me this opportunity to address the issue of the superintendent's salary. I appreciate my fellow citizens' comments, though I may disagree with them, some of them are neighbors of mine. But that's what disagreement and being able to discuss things are all about. I've got 20 years in senior leadership positions over the last, well, I'm 78 years old, so I have a comprehensive account, and I will read to make sure I'm on the timeline, of impeccable legacy and transformative impact that our superintendent of schools has cultivated within our district, underscoring the critical need for a salary increase to preserve his exceptional leadership and retain his invaluable contributions. I won't go over this list of extensive, this extensive list, but I will highlight a couple of them. First off, a 97% graduation rate, over 1,800 AP passes, an 82% rate. I realize that the director of our superintendent of schools understands the literacy issues, and he has established some foundational programs to address those as well as student reading. Number one SOR in the nation, significant upgrades across all schools include film windows, locked doors, so forth, for safe schools. $45 million increase in compensation over the last two years, $5 increase for support staff, and I could go on and on, $30 million investment in county-wide athletic facilities, and then lastly, the establishment of the Carol Smith Innovation Center, which addresses and prepares students for future careers, intersections over industry and schools, students will definitely benefit through this. Intersections over industry schools, students will definitely benefit from this. At the heart of my advocacy for a salary increase lies in the imperatives to preserve our district's distinguished legacy of exceptional education outcomes. Under the visionary leadership of our superintendent, we have achieved commendable graduation rates, as I've noted, that surpasses most state and national averages, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to the empowering of students with the tools and knowledge required for future success. Furthermore, our district boasts the highest number of STEM schools in the state of Tennessee, a testament to our superintendent's unwavering dedication to fostering innovation, critical thinking, and excellence in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Equally noteworthy is our district standing as a beacon of excellence in career technical education, setting the gold standard for vocational training and preparing students for diverse career paths. This accomplishment reflects the superintendent's foresight and strategic planning in aligning our educational offerings with the evolving needs of the workforce, ensuring that our graduates are equipped to excel in all increasing competitive and dynamic future. Looking to the future, it is imperative that we safeguard our district's continuing success and trajectory of growth through insightful and visionary leadership. Our superintendent's exceptional ability to anticipate challenges, seize opportunities, and inspire meaningful change has been instrumental in propelling our district to new heights in achievement. And I will acknowledge his forceful acknowledgement of the impact of AI on our schools and our students is foremost in the future. Moreover, the superintendent's see-and-be-seen philosophy epitomizes his hands-on approach to leadership, embodying deep-rooted commitment to engaging with our schools, students, parents, and community members on a personal level. His presence at school events, athletic competitions, and civic engagements not only fosters a sense of unity and pride within our district, but also serves as a powerful symbol of his accessibility, advocacy, and dedication to representing the best interest of our school district in a mirrored public forums. In conclusion, I implore the school board to approve the salary increase for Dr. Langford by acknowledging his unparalleled contributions, preserving our legacy of excellence, and demonstrating a commitment to safeguarding our future. We uphold the values of educational integrity, progress, and community engagement that defines our district's identity. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Lindsay Doss. Lindsay Doss?
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Nope, next on the.
Good evening, you guys. My name is Lindsay Doss. My address is 204 Lacy Court in Portland. I'm basically just going to read the email that I sent earlier, just wanting to make sure that my voice is heard. So the first thing I want to talk about is I fully support extending Dr. Langford's contract. In his time as director of schools, I believe that he has done his best for the betterment of all students in this county. Also, I believe, and most importantly, I believe that he is, he's willing to talk. He's very approachable. He's willing to listen, and I think this is a very important quality to have in these increasingly polarizing times. You have to be able to have a conversation. The second thing I want to talk about is winter break, Christmas break. So winter break was the name for decades. That was the name of the break between the semesters. It's been winter break before it was changed to Christmas break. Calling it winter break does not erase Christianity. If you go to any school, at my school, you walk around in the hallways, there's little Post-it notes of Bible verses, which I think is a beautiful thing. We just need to remember that we have students of all faiths in this county. I feel I I think it's very important that students of different faiths see themselves represented in the decisions that are made in this county. We need to be for inclusivity and not exclusivity. Again, this is not about erasing Christianity. It is not about erasing Christmas. You know, as someone else said, you know, New Year's happens over this break. Let's just call it New Year's break. You know what I mean? So, yeah, and I just, I really think there are bigger issues that we could spend our time on rather than arguing about the name of a break. But, yeah, so like I said, I am for extending the contract and keep winter break, and also calendar option number one is the favored for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Cruz.
Holly Cruz, 3275 Hartsville Pike, Casale Springs. I apologize if I'm a little jumbled. I was trying to add and take away things as I was sitting in the audience. Good evening, school board members. I'm speaking tonight on two topics, the first being Dr. Langford's contract extension and salary increase. I would like to speak in favor of you voting to approve these items along with some potential additional considerations. As a Sumner County Schools parent for the last seven and a half years, a current PTO officer and a former school board candidate, I have been afforded the opportunity to see a variety of sides of Dr. Langford. He has been responsive to late-night text messages and early phone calls. He has helped me facilitate chairs to be used for a middle school play last year, and he has continually shown that he will show up even if the conversations are hard. He knows, as some of you, that I don't always agree with his approach or his decisions. However, in looking at the scope of the work that comes along with being the director of schools, paired with keeping a position within our schools competitive with surrounding areas, I am in favor of a contract extension and addressing increasing his salary. One board member during the study session, it might have been more than one of you, I apologize, throughout the idea of adding some criteria to a contract negotiation. I I agree that, looking forward, that that is something that you may want to consider, including today. I've previously spoken about creating a director's advisory board, which could be utilized in determining an outcome of, which could be utilized in determining the outcome of contract raise negotiations, giving school staff, parents, students, county administrators this time to utilize, to address issues that are not directly board responsibilities, but can develop, create, address concerns, achievements, and needs in our district. I hope that a conversation regarding looking beyond an outright contract approval raise is brought up this evening. I do agree that that can sometimes be a little bit scary for some people. I respect Dr. Langford for his commitment to Sumner County Schools throughout his career, and I appreciate him being an advocate for a strong public school system. May we all remember that a strong school system results in a strong community that we will all benefit from. I would also like to speak in favor of calendar option number one. Seeing some, a lot of conversations, I know that teachers really, 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 and school staff need that time between registration and the first day of school, as well as giving teachers a dedicated day before the first day of school to utilize in their classroom. As a former teacher, daughter of a public school teacher, I know that time for teachers is incredibly important and necessary. Addressing the concern of winter break first Christmas break. I've seen conversations online that by making the change, we minimize in Christmas and threatening the removal of Christ in schools. I challenge those that believe that to ask a parent of a student in our schools, one which my child walks past a prayer locker in the hallways, where you can participate and see you at the pole, where they do a morning prayer, where they can participate in FCA club, that there are plenty of opportunities to showcase your beliefs. I believe that every child should have a club or an organization that they belong to and feel safe at. I challenge the board to remember that while Christmas Day is December 25th, nobody's trying to take that away or remove that, the other 15 days of that break include other religious and cultural days. Please remember that we are a community that is not exclusive. We are a school system that represents a wide variety of religious and cultural beliefs outside of the Christian faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for speaking this evening. We appreciate your comments. Next item on the agenda is the director's contract extension. First item is discussion or action regarding proposed director of schools contract extension. Ms. Brennan?
I move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All right. Discussion. Mr. Lancaster.
All right, so, you know, we've had several people talk about performance criteria, and, you know, I brought that up at the study session. I sent you guys an email on Sunday, I believe it was. Had something for us third, last Tuesday, but had the wrong base salary in there that we were currently at, and so didn't want to give you bad data, so I rescinded. But I would like to at least make the motion to amend the superintendent's employment agreement by replacing the third paragraph that currently states, "The annual salary rate of the employee shall be $225,000. Any increase in pay shall be equal to and be limited to any increase approved by the board for certified employees of Sumner County School Board with the following. The annual base salary of the employee shall be $208,000. The board will pay the employee the above-mentioned compensation in monthly equal installments in accordance with policy. The board will award additional compensation of up to 10% of the employee's base salary annually based on meeting specific performance objectives as outlined in Exhibit A Performance Addendum. Any increase in pay shall be equal to and limited to, and be limited to any increase approved by the board for certified employees of Sumner County School Board." So that's my motion.
All right, can you, do you have that written down?
Yeah.
Can you provide a copy of that to Mr. Johnson, just that way when board members ask for clarification on exactly what the text is, he can read that off? So I do have the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I've got it. I've got a second by Mr. King. All right, so now we have, the director's contract is on the floor. We've got an amendment to adjust language in the contract. So that's the item that we're going to be talking about right now. So let's stay on the topic of the amendment, which is the adjusted salary for base and the metrics that that you discussed.
Yeah, I've got, now that I've got a motion and a second, I've got like my, I guess ration.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So as a board, of course, one of our most important responsibilities is hiring, supporting, and evaluating our superintendent. The superintendent's leadership drives every part of the district's success, from student learning to staff morale to fiscal responsibility. That's why I believe that this next contract should be performance-based with clear measurable goals tied directly to our district's priorities. This is not a 100% performance-based contract. I've had, you know, some people, I think, thought that was what it was. This is, you got a base, and you can earn a bonus of up to 10% of your salary based on hitting these performance metrics. It's not about micromanaging. It's about clarity and accountability. It simply defines what success looks like and measures it fairly. It helps us stay aligned as a board and a district around shared goals, academic growth, sound budgeting, staff retention, and community trust, and track progress over time. It's also like, we all got an email today from from a community member that said this was like the backdoor way to fire the superintendent. That's not what it is at all, because the worst thing that could happen if you didn't meet the performance metrics is you get your base. The framework is designed to support the superintendent, not undermine them. It provides structure, fairness, and transparency. When goals are clearly defined and progress is measured objectively, it actually protects both the superintendent and the board from confusion or shifting expectations or people thinking, hey, y'all are only doing this for political reasons, or you don't like, you know, you don't like the superintendent, or you like him for personal reasons. Data takes emotion out of things, and that's one thing that, as a finance guy, I 100% believe. It strengthens public confidence. We have taxpayers and families who want to know we're making decisions based on data, not politics or personalities. And we see, when they see that the superintendent's performance and his compensation are directly tied to district outcomes, it builds trust and transparency in our leadership. I feel like it also benefits the superintendent as well. His expectations are clearly defined. They're voted on by the board, and they, he can lead confidently, knowing exactly what this board values and how success will be measured. It fosters collaboration and not conflict. I personally urge us to to go with a contract framework that ties performance to results and positions our superintendent and our district for measurable success. I personally cannot continue to support the way that we, as a board, do contract negotiations. I'm not blaming anyone for the way we do it. It's like likely that's the way we've always done it. But I also think our process of having one board member go and negotiate with our sole employee regarding his contract without real input from all board members as to what we seek from a goals and performance standpoint has to change.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Oh, well, he actually answered my questions.
Mr. Hulse?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with metrics at all. I don't know that it's appropriate to add into the base contract, however. For instance, you know, what metrics are we going to do? Is it to get more of a graduation rate, 97%? There's, him up for failure if we do some of these metrics as part of his base contract. I think where it would be more appropriate personally is part of the evaluation that we do every single year, and we do this in a study session, come up with agreeable metrics that make sense, that are achievable and fair. Again, you know, I would say too, you know, the things that I'm trying to consider within myself, I've heard all the comments. I appreciate all the comments. There's value, and each point is valid. Where I keep going back to is he is significantly, if he walked out of the room right now, we're going to be paying about $30,000 more a year for a similar person in his position. And he has not taken a raise the last two years. And we've got number one SRO program in the country, number one CTE program in the state. The innovation that his team is doing is, and I mean, I'm all, I mean, all of you guys, every time you come in here and tell us what you're doing with the the plans that you have going around AI and how our kids can learn better, are there things that can be better? Yes, the ADA, the, you know, the playground stuff, it was brought to our attention, and we're doing something about it. I want to know what else out there, if we need to do something. I keep hearing bullying. I want to know what's going on, and we need to fix that. That is not acceptable. And, but again, you know, going back to the contract and stuff, I think putting metrics on there, I think, is, I don't feel like that is the right place to do it. And I've heard people talk about in their corporate environments, you know, that's tied to it. I I've been in corporate world for 40 years, and I haven't had that, unless it was sales, but he's, you know, sales bonuses or whatever. But I do think we do need some metrics that are measurable and achievable that we can do as part of our evaluation every year. If he doesn't meet those, then we give him a bad evaluation, and that's how we, that's how we move forward. And there's, there's ways to get rid of him. If he doesn't meet some of these things, there are ways to get rid of him. It's not like, you know, I've heard, seen some comments like, we can't get rid of him. But no, there's ways we can get rid of him if we want to. But again, I agree with you. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with where we need to put that, in my opinion. But I do agree with you that we do need to have something measurable, but it's just where do we put that?
Ms. Brennan?
I echo what I said last week at the study session. I agree. We are required, and we do evaluate the director on the items that we choose that we evaluate him on. It may be time for this board to make some different choices, and I would like the time and attention to dive into what we should be using on a performance evaluation and update that performance evaluation. I don't believe that belongs in a contract. It allows us to divorce performance from contract negotiations, which is a very common practice in in corporate America, because it allows you to give the feedback that you need to give and watch for improvement before you make the conversation of compensation. So I think that's an important key to remember. I will not be voting for this amendment, but I would support discussing this in a future meeting when we have time to dive into the numbers and the data and let the data tell a story that we need to dive into. I also recommend it and still do that we look at considering smarter goals, using the acronym we discussed last time, and make sure that they are relevant and time-bound. And we should, the other thing I would like to mention is around the contract. And we should, the other thing I would like to mention is around the contract. My understanding is that we are legally obligated by Tennessee state law to do the contract negotiations the way that they're done. So one board member meeting with the director is Tennessee state law.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes, Mr. Lancaster, thank you for putting this together. And I agree to the metrics to a degree, but back to really what Mr. Hollis, Ms. Brennan said, not necessarily attached to Dr. Langford's contract, more back to his performance evaluation, which has sections in it on student achievement. It's just putting those metrics, and also not doing it in a hurried manner, you know, in corporate, when we make changes to people's, to evaluations or performance, there's usually, there's more discussion than just, you know, putting this forward tonight and us voting for it. I'd like to see this brought up in a study session, and if I read what you sent correctly from Knox County, that was in collaboration, the board and Dr. Langford, and it may have even said staff, but they, those performance objectives were put together collaboratively. Because I think not only do just Dr. Langford, yes, absolutely, his performance should be measured based on, you know, the outcomes of student achievement, teacher retention was brought up, but I think that's in partnership with the board. We make a lot of decisions that could become a variable in him being able to achieve what he's trying to achieve, or a future director. So, again, I would not vote at this time to move forward with your proposed amendment.
Ms. Leasing?
Yeah, District Six Board Member, he mentioned that there's nobody that would want to come in here and make two hundred and eight thousand dollars a year. I know you weren't a part of the last board, the director search, but there was plenty of candidates, extremely good candidates that wanted to be at this school as a director. Two of them were at, in this school district, or a couple more, and they were extremely qualified. This board purposely set out to disqualify them from even being viable candidates. They changed the policy while we were doing the director's search, where the director had to have a doctorate, and that excluded those candidates on purpose. There's a lot of principals that would be great directors of schools, so we would have opportunities if we needed a director of school.
Ms. Lancaster?
Sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, so, so I'm losing my voice, so forgive me, but the idea of tying metrics into the evaluation of the director of schools, my thought on that is, when we do those evaluations, on some level, I find it hard to take seriously, and the reason for that is some board members give a perfect ten across, in every category. And I find that to be a little bit disingenuous, because when I was a teacher and I was evaluated, there was always a growth measure, there was always some area where, hey, you're doing great here, but hey, we think this is a place that you could improve. And we didn't get that from some of the board members in this last evaluation who gave perfect tens on Dr. Langford's evaluation. So, so I don't know if that is going to really do the job. Well, if we're, if our goal is to try to get some measurable goals, and I've been saying this, I've said this before, I think as a board, as part of our strategic plan, we need to develop measurable goals. I mentioned before that our reading scores are below fifty percent for third graders, third to eighth grade, that's something that's got to change, maybe some of these new things that we're doing is going to help that out. But as far as the director's evaluation, I need to really think more on that, and how that would work with metrics. When we have, when we're not really, I don't want to say fair, I mean, we're not being objective, it's very subjective, okay? When you give everybody, when you give the guy a perfect tens, it's like, he's got, I mean, there's not one area he can improve. If someone gave me all tens, I'd be like, seriously? I would not even think that was an honest assessment, right? I'd be flattered, but we're supposed to be professional, and if there's an area of improvement, and I think everybody would have an area of improvement, some kind of growth measure to focus on. So I guess, I don't know if this amendment is going to accomplish the goal of getting some metrics and some measurable goals. I mean, I think it, I think it could, but my thought on this is, I would like to explore this further, and I would like to find out from our board attorney some things that, how this, you know, how this could work, but he's not here. And that's another concern I have, is our board attorney's not here tonight. I've got questions, I know some other board members probably have questions. I don't know if we can do this tonight, and this is a great example, because I think this is something we need to really discuss, perhaps in a study session moving forward. I would, I would recommend that, you know, perhaps in the course of this conversation, we table this to discuss further in a study session.
Are you making a motion to table?
Not right now, not right now, I'm just trying to see where everybody's at on this.
Good, thank you. Ms. Lancaster?
Everybody, Jessica. So, again, this is my, start of my fourth year on this board. I've only really had the first contract that we discussed. I don't, I think Dr. Phillips, when I came on, had already announced his intent to resign. So, you know, I don't know how this is supposed to work. All I know is, we got, to me, we have to come up with a better way, and I don't mean that necessarily by, yes, I understand when one person goes in and negotiates, but what I'm saying is, we as a board have got to come up with metrics, goals, whatever you're saying. If we don't get it done tonight, I completely understand that, I, you know. The goal was never to talk about Ms. Barnes, what she said, the goal was never to bring this and say, here it is, take it or leave it. Obviously, in our perfect world, we would have already discussed the performance metrics that I had. I just basically used a, an example of some other, you know, other school districts, what they had used. But at the end of the day, you know, I have asked for board goals every year, and we never really get anything like what Ms. Brennan said with smart goals. We, we're like, well, we have board goals, we have a board policy of what our mission statement is, but, I mean, what is our, what is our board goal of literacy rate this year? What is our, what is our board goal of the graduation rate this year? You know, yes, Dr. Langford is the one who, is the one that incorporates the meat and potatoes of whatever that is, but we should know what it is, and we should do everything in our power as a board, that's, when we're spending money, say, hey, guys, this is board goal number three for the year of our literacy rate, and this, you know, new program or new curriculum, that's why we're doing it. That's all, I mean, it's more of a philosophy change that I want to see us take, you know, but this where we're like, hey, we're going to talk about salary negotiation next month at the study session, and that really just involves a salary proposal being brought in that, you know, one of us went and talked to Dr. Langford. That's just, I can't support that method anymore, and that's just, that's not how a person with my, you know, data-driven background, I can't do it. So all I'm asking is that we take this into consideration, if people want more time to take it into consideration, you know. I don't think we're under any kind of gun, we have forty-five days before an election, before the general election by state law that we have to present a contract, you know, so we would have time. And it's, again, it's meant to be a more fair, clear method for everybody involved. I know we don't live in a world or a county where anybody believes that, but from, you know, based on what size you, you know, how, what color red you wear, but that's what it's meant to be. You can either trust me or not, I, you know, I get it, but I just, we've got to get to a point where we can not only sell what we do as a board to the community, to people that, you know, we have people that are going to think we are, that what we do is terrible, no matter what we do. We could be doing everything one-hundred percent right, but we always need to be able to say, well, here it is, you want to know why we gave Dr. Langford a raise this year? And that raise was, you know, twenty thousand dollars or whatever it is? We said, hey, we want this, 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 and this, and he didn't meet all three of them, but he met enough of them that the board said, yep, he deserved that piece. And next year, we've already got this, 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 and this. And until we get to that point, then everything else, this, you know, two years from now, I'm still here, may not be by choice, may not be by, not choice, but if I'm still here, I just don't want to be like, hey, here's the contract, and it's this, you know, we're going to give him, we're going to give this, and we still don't have these goals. I want, my challenge is, at some point, every board member knows, hey, our literacy score goal this year is X percent. And that's, that's my mission, and that's my challenge to you guys, so, you know, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I think that's super valuable for your past four years of experience, seeing something that wasn't done when you did your first contract, and now you see you want to do this time, especially as a newer board member. I have a question, are we going to have a board retreat again this year? I know we had one last year because we were new, but are we going to do one again?
Do you guys want to have?
So my reasoning for this is because of two things. Personally, I think the timing of this is, I mean, we all know there's like elections going on next year, and while there could be, this could look a little bit different up here, who knows? I would, I would hope that we could use that time at a board, like in a board retreat, where we actually come up, I agree with you, the evaluation we did this year, like I'm just being real, like the evaluation's outdated. I think, I think we have to strategically and look at something that's a little bit more, and I say that as even somebody that filled it out, like, I think we need to be a little bit more inundated, I think it needs to be a little bit more built to some of the rationale that you brought tonight. I think that's done in our board retreat, and just like you said, I think last, last year was just so, was weird, because that was really the first time we all had extended amount of time together, where it still kind of felt like it was getting to know each other. I don't think that's going to be the case this year, because now we've all been on the board for two years. I would argue that we use that time for that specifically. So regardless of, if you decide to, you know, whatever happens, you can leave here knowing that you did put that into place, and that we did. I think that would be the time to do that. I brought this up in the study session last year, or last time, when I had like a really, I talk about sports, because I do come from a college football background, when I went to, right before I was going to go to Ole Miss, I had a job lined up to work there, and the coach got fired, and everything fell through from my position, where in the spring of my senior year of college, I no longer had a grad association, no longer had a job, and I saw the chaos that happened within that athletic department. Same thing happened when I graduated grad school, and I got the chance to go work for James Franklin at Vanderbilt. He sat in a meeting on a Tuesday and told us he wasn't leaving, and on that Wednesday, he left for Penn State. And while Vanderbilt is now a top-ten team, it took that long for that school to be relevant again. I'm taking the person out of this and looking at the contract, it's, what we have in place is bad, it's outdated, and I'm looking at all these other school districts around us, and it's not even just the base pay, I agree that we need to have some of this in there. We are not set up for being, I, yeah, there is definitely going to be some really high candidates that would look for us, and people that would want it so, so bad, I don't discredit that at all. But take him outside of this, if he decides to leave tomorrow, I don't think we're competitive. And if we want the best, we need to have a good contract, and I do think that some of this needs to be in that contract, so they know what job they're signing up for when they come and apply. So you don't have, we're not handicapping them before they accept or look into something, so, but I think that needs to be determined, something like a board retreat with this group right here, so that would be my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. King?
Yeah, and I'm looking at this contract for the Knox County Director of Schools, where Mr. Langford got this information, and I would, I'm just going to express, I would like to look over this a little more. It looks like a very good contract, with some things that I find very attractive, just upon first glance here. You know, and I would like to explore this a little further, I don't feel like I'm ready to vote on this amendment tonight, but I feel like, I think it's worth looking at, and should we decide to explore this, maybe in a couple of weeks, so.
Charles?
Yeah, I just did a quick search of the TSBA website, and they have services for boards like us for superintendent evaluation, so, I mean, we don't have to recreate the will or figure out something that may not be relevant or effective or what we need, but there are options out there where we could, again, you know, do you put the metrics in a contract, or do you put the metrics in an evaluation, what, you know, where I see it right now, I see it more on the evaluation side, and I do think that would be something that, a study session, and get some help from the TSBA, figure out what we need, and, you know, you know, because there's, I mean, you can tell there's people that support, there's people that don't support, and, you know, we just want to have it where it's objective and fair, and make sure we continue to have, at the end of the day, are these, are our kids getting better, are they more suited to succeed in college and life, and that's what I'm worried about for my kids, and, again, I think it's done a great job since I've been here, especially the metrics that I'm looking at. So, again, if we need to have that in there, then I don't think we do it by, you know, you know, by the seat of our pants, I think we need to sit down and figure out what needs to be in there, and think it through.
Mr. King?
Yeah, I just want to make one quick comment. I did look up the, but, so, we have forty-five days before the, a general election, and then thirty days after an election, where we can't modify a contract, so we have, and it's not a primary, but it's, so the general election, I believe, is in next August, so we do have plenty of time, you know, just wanted to point that out. It's forty-five days before, thirty days after, to modify a contract, or terminate, or whatever, any kind of contract negotiation for a director of schools, so just wanted to lay that out.
Thank you. All right, before we vote on the amendment here, just a second, I do want to mention, I know we're talking about metrics, I know we're talking about the director's evaluation. If you've been at any of our study sessions in the past two years, since you all served as board members, and then previously, there's a lot of analytics that go into decisions that are made, there's a lot of analytics that are made at the school level. When we're having, when the director of schools is meeting with principals, year in and year out, they're setting goals, based on the results of testing and other metrics they're looking at as well. So, you know, when we're looking at metrics, we're talking about what those metrics should be, I am a little concerned about putting any metric that's tied strictly to test scores, I think there's some value in the test scores, but I also think that's a one-day look at how a student performs on that day, and so I think any metrics that is a board, it takes time for us to look and analyze and say, what is it that we think as a board is important for us to measure, and then make that decision, and let the school system know, so that all the principals, so that everyone else understands what we're looking for from a performance standpoint, in addition to just the director, because it's not just the director, he's our only employee, you know, but we're elected as officials here in Sumner County for the entire school system, and that's what our mandate should be outside of just the director of school. Are we doing everything we can to make sure all of our students, all of our staff, all of our administration is performing at the level that we expect? So with that, we're going to vote on the amendment, a no vote on the amendment, a vote of no on the amendment, the amendment will fail, vote is yes, the amendment will pass, and then we'll be back on the main then we'll be back on the main motion, depending on, on what the results of, of this.
If I, if I may, I mean, I kinda, you know, I read the room here, so, I'm just going to change my, amend my motion, or change what I originally motioned, so my motion was to amend, but do it tonight, and I realize that's not fair to you all, so I will just motion that we defer that to a study session to discuss these metrics to the very next one.
So I, I would suggest that we vote on the amendment, and then we get back to the main motion, we can make a motion to defer.
Okay, well, we can do that too.
If that makes sense, that way, we're moving the whole discussion of the contract versus just discussion of amendment to a future goal.
Right.
If that makes sense? So I'll take that motion.
As long as the, as long as my, the vote now does not destroy the potential of bringing it back.
We will, we will allow you to bring that back up, all right. Mr. Johnson?
Roll call vote for me.
Yes, sir. Ms. Hayes?
Mr. Johnson, would you clarify the motion?
Yes, so the motion is, a motion to amend paragraph three to read, the annual base salary of the employees shall be two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars, the board will pay the employee the above-mentioned compensation in monthly equal installments in accordance with policy. The board will award additional compensation of up to ten percent of the employee's base salary annually, based on meeting specific performance objectives of the outline and exhibit A performance addendum, any increase in pay shall be equal to, but, but be limited to any increase approved by the board, or for certified employees of SCSB, and, and as Mr. Daniels said, yes vote is for the amendment, and a no vote is against it.
No.
Ms. Tucker? Mr. Lancaster?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Hollis?
No.
Ms. Brennan?
No.
Ms. Stewart?
No.
Ms. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Chairman Daniels?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, now we're back on the main motion.
All right, I'll do it now.
All right.
Now, the motion to defer, so we actually can sit down as a group and talk about what our goals are, and add some performance-type stuff to it, and that type of thing, however you wanna put that in. I actually typed that one out, this is, you know, you get the, seat of my pants motion there.
So just to clarify, you, your motion to defer the vote on the contract, correct?
Defer the vote on the contract, so we can discuss adding a, a...
Yeah, so it'd be a motion to defer the contract.
Got a motion, do you have a second?
I'll say it.
All right, I've got a second. All right, Ms. Johnson, do you wanna go to roll call vote again?
Yes, yes, sir.
I think we should have discussion. That is a motion that we could discuss.
Okay, a motion to defer?
The motion to defer.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So, so I'll offer some other additional reasons why I, I believe we should defer. One is, and I'll have to say again, our board attorney's not here, and I have really serious questions and concerns about paragraph two, especially the statement in the contract that says, quote, "The parties hereby waive, supplant, and supersede by agreement any statutory rule or policy provision they have the legal power to alter." I, I was doing some, some research on this, it, it sounds like, in plain English, both parties are agreeing to set aside parts of Tennessee law and local board policy whenever we, they think we, they can, or that whenever we think we can. The problem is, is we can't, a school board cannot waive or rewrite state law by contract, and a director of schools cannot redefine duties that the legislature has already established. TCA forty-nine-two-two oh three, forty-nine-two-three oh one, the powers of both the board and the director are fixed by statute. Tennessee Attorney General and our courts have repeatedly said that a, that a public body cannot sign an agreement that conflicts with state law or public policy. Any clause that tries to do so is void and unenforceable from the moment it's signed. This language opens the door to serious financial and legal risk. If a future spirit arises about salary termination or benefits, attorneys will argue over which statutes were waived. That kind of ambiguity can cause taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees or settlements, and that is why the TSDA model contracts, why their model contracts takes the opposite approach, they explicitly state that every director's contract, quote, "shall perform to and be governed by Tennessee law and board policy," and that's, that's clear, compliant, protects everyone. And so, my question is, I, I need to, I would like to get, this is just my research, from what I've discovered, I, I feel that that statement is, it, I find it very concerning. I have two attorneys that, that I'm in touch with, that told me they would never let their clients sign any contract that had that clause in it. So, to me, that's, that's a strong reason to defer this, so we can get counsel from our attorney on that, on that particular clause. And the other one is the, at the bottom of paragraph six, it says, "The board will support the employee and not interfere with his ability to carry out his duties as prescribed by Tennessee law." So I, my question to the board attorney again would be, what, what constitutes interfering with his ability to carry out his duties? To me, it sounds very vague, it almost sounds like we work for him, and he doesn't work for us, that, that particular statement. And I'm not sure we need to strike these, these statements from this contract, I'm, I'm just very concerned about all of that. And then finally, I just wanna bring up the fact that we have a lawsuit that is in active litigation against the schools, that this board has not been told about. The new board members have not been told about this case, and we, they, they're not new anymore, you guys have been on the board for over a year. We had a executive session in July, our board attorney did not tell us about this case, and I find it very suspicious. This, this particular case, our, our director of schools is named in it, he's accused of retaliation, there's, and, and also...
I think we're off, I think we're off track for the motion at hand.
Point of order, Chairman. This is very important. I've got a point of order. Please.
This, this is all public record, these were documents that came from the Chancery Court, and I'm just telling you what's in it. I'm just giving you the information, it's all a public record. Every citizen in this room can, can get a copy of this from the Chancery Court, so there's no reason why I cannot share this in a public meeting.
Chairman, this is extremely important.
I've got it.
Okay, I'm just saying, it, the allegations are these, there was retaliation against a teacher, and the procedure for termination, for dismissal, as required by state law and board policy, was not followed, according to this complaint, okay? And this is Stephanie Miller versus Sumner County Board of Education. My question is, I'm, I just, I, I would like to ask our director, if you don't mind, has, have you given a deposition in this case?
Yes.
Okay, we need to see that deposition, we need to know what he said, and we need to be able to read that, and let that inform our decision. And so, I think this case, where we have these allegations, it's been kept disclosed, it has not been disclosed from the board, raises the suspicion, perhaps, and, and there's been plenty of opportunity to tell this board about this case. The last time we had an executive session on this case was February of 2024. Why have we not been told about it? The school board was, a new school board was seated in September, there should've been an executive session right away to in, inform the board of all litigation, ongoing litigation before the board, and yet, we did not get any kind of information until July, and our board attorney did not tell us about this case. I find that strange, why not tell us? Could it be, and I'm, I'm speculating, that the new board members...
Point of order, we are off track.
That, yeah, we, we've heard, we've heard what you said, we understand, you know, let's stay away from speculation, because you don't know the facts.
Well, I can offer an opinion.
We're gonna move on.
Well, my opinion is, maybe they wanna get this contract through before we find out about this case.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go on to Mr. Evans, and then I'll circle back to you, Mr. King. Mr. Evans?
Hey, thanks for bringing that. I do think we should be prepped and discussed with our attorney, so I actually agree with you on that. He's not here, so we can't, I don't think we should be discussing it without him here to discuss with us, so, I do support that. The two things you just brought up, I'm just trying to be sure, yeah, the two things that you wanted to chop out of the contract are word-for-word what they were in 2023 when you approved it last time. So why was it, why was it, why is it, or why was it okay then, but not now? It's word-for-word the same, I'm looking at the contract side by side, number two and number six are word-for-word the same, what y'all approved in 23 versus now.
All right, I'll circle back to you, Mr. King, if you'd like to answer that here in a moment.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, so, we don't typically address questions to board members, we can answer those as part of the discussion, so, Mr. Lacy?
Yes, sir, Chairman, thank you. I think it's extremely important that we know about this. Why would we not wanna know about this case?
Let me, let me step in here.
And the fact that we don't know the facts.
Let me step in here real quick, Mr. Lacy. There's a lawsuit that Mr. King has mentioned, we have this executive session where we speak about that lawsuit, and that's where we talk about exactly what's going on. There's a question asked, was our director deposed? He answered that question. I believe there's more facts, I believe there's more board members that might've been deposed in that lawsuit as well, and I think we're bordering on, on a discussion that needs to be had in the executive session. I will ask our board attorney to brief us on this lawsuit prior to our next meeting, so that you can ask the questions that you wanna ask, but I would caution against speculation, because I can tell you, and you've heard from our board attorney on multiple lawsuits, we have been involved in many lawsuits. And, and, and the facts of those lawsuits don't always play out in court, the way they are laid out in the lawsuit, that's why there's a trial, that's why there's a judge, that's why there's attorneys to argue it. So when we start speculating before every individual that's charged or bringing a case, then we're doing it injustice to those that are involved in the lawsuit. So I would ask respectfully, that, we've had discussion on the lawsuit tonight, it's been brought to the attention, I will ask our board attorney to brief us on that in executive session prior to our next meeting, but I would caution against speculation.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
But how can we vote for his contract renewal if we don't know the facts? You told Mr. King you don't know the facts, well, none of us apparently know the facts. You may, because you're the chairman of this board, but we do not know, so how can we make a good face?
We have a motion to defer, and we will vote on that motion, and the board will make a decision on whether we defer the contract or not, it's part of what the board's allowed to do. Any other comments? All right, so we have a motion to defer. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see the light. Mr. King?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll, I'll respond to my colleague from District Four. I did not, I did not vote to approve the contract in, in 2023. As, as to far as that particular clause, I'd have to go back and look if I asked a question about it, but I did not vote, I was a no vote on the contract then. I have the old contract here, so I, I'd have to look and see what my, what were my reasons for not voting on the contract, that was probably one of them. And, you know, I, I'll just say that, that over, over the years, there, and for you guys that are new on the board, well, you're not new, you've been on, you've been on here a year, you, there, there's a big learning curve, I may not have known to ask the question about that, that, but, but it has been brought to my attention now, and what I did three years ago is, I think, irrelevant, this is what's before us now, I, I don't, I didn't vote for it then, so I, I can't remember why, I mean, there were, I have to go back and look at my notes, so, but I did not vote for this contract in 2023.
Mr. Hollis?
Yeah, just to clarify, this contract, it was looked at and approved by our attorneys, is it correct?
Yes, sir, me and Ms. Hayes went over the contract with our attorney on the phone. Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion to defer on the table. A yes vote is, is to defer discussion of the contract, a no vote is to continue to discuss the main motion, and continue to discuss it, so, can we get a roll call vote? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, Ms. Hayes?
A vote to not defer.
So a motion is, the motion is to defer, a yes vote would be to defer the contract, and no vote would be to not defer the contract. Ms. Tucker?
No.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
No.
Ms. Brennan?
No.
Ms. Stewart?
No.
Ms. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Chairman Daniels?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Back on the main motion. All right, seeing no comments, then we will...
I do, I do.
Okay.
I wanna talk a little, I have something to share about, about this.
Mr. Lacy, I'm gonna go to you on Mr. King.
So are we talking about the contract? I, like I said, me and the director, we've got along, you know, we've had our difficulties, but I, apparently, there's two sets of board members, and I feel like we're at our last, when we were choosing Scott Langford, the Dr. Langford to be our director of schools, it's like you've got one group over here that's just one-hundred percent, they have no doubts, and then you've got these board members over here that are just screaming, hey, watch out, wake up, you know, you know, I feel like a second-rate board member, I don't get communicated with, I don't really get valued, my opinion, my opinion is never valued with this director, very few times has he ever asked me for my opinion. I've offered my opinion, but there's no value in what I offer the director. A lot of the teachers do not want this pay raise for the director, the director has already gotten an eight-thousand-dollar raise in July, and I'm disappointed in that, because the teachers got a twenty-five-hundred to a five-thousand-dollar raise, which are underpaid, these, our teachers are underpaid, if you look at the other schools around us, they don't think he deserves a twenty-five-thousand-dollar raise. I don't, like I said, if the teachers get twenty-five-hundred to five-thousand dollars a year, one-time raise, why does he need eight thousand plus seventeen thousand more? I think it's really ingenuine, you guys have made it spoken that you think our director is underpaid, but I ask you, what about our teachers? Is the director more important than our teachers? Where you seek your money, I've always heard the statement, where you put your money is where your heart's at, do you love our teachers as much as you do the director of schools? Because I can tell there's six, seven of you that really love him, maybe eight of you, you really love him, you think he does a great job. Like I said, I, on the other hand, I cannot support this contract, I would like for it to be known why. I've heard from a lot of people that he is hostile with people, that he bullies people, I've, like I said, I don't think he has our school's best interest in heart, always. I, I think he has our best interest in heart when it benefits him, and that's just my opinion, that's the way I view it, and if you go against him, there's gonna be retaliation coming your way. So I, like I said, I cannot support this, and I'm saddened by, y'all just seem so gung-ho no matter what, that you're just gonna brush this through, you're gonna kinda just ram it through no matter what. We've gotten two or three emails in support of the director to get a twenty-five-thousand-dollar raise, and we've gotten thirty, forty emails saying, hey, there's something wrong, he's already gotten an eight-thousand-dollar raise, I mean, that's really good. And then we're fixing, the board will give him seventeen thousand extra here in a minute. I know it's gonna pass, we're wasting our breath, but I would think that, I would like to see the director try harder to work with all of us, and, like I said, I've been on the board almost three years, and I feel like I've, and that's fine, but I've never really gotten respect from this director. I would like to, I feel like Dell Phillips tried to offer an olive branch, but not with this director. but not with this director. It's kind of like you're either for me or you're my enemy. And I really, and I'm gonna stop with here. And we know that someone put out a story this week, and it's not a story, it's a fact.
Point boarder, we are off base.
Am I out of time, Chairman? Am I allowed to speak? Okay. This director, we know for a fact that he has called people publicly fascists. On Facebook publicly, and you guys are full steam ahead, ramming this through someone who calls people fascists. I mean, how is that even right? Well, we're in, what, 2025? Everything that's transpired in America, and you don't have a problem with that? I just find it really alarming and really sad. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would point out that, you know, I think we've all been called names by a lot of people across the community.
Fascist is not a really nice word anymore.
I think we've been called a lot worse by a lot of people, so I appreciate your comments. So I'm gonna go on to Mr. King.
Yeah, I just want to share some things. Bear with me. I have a right to give a speech according to Robert Rogers' rules. And I do want to share some information about how we got to where we are and highlight a few things that occurred during the first director search in 2023 because I think it's relevant to know what, where, how we are, how, how we got to where we are right now. The school board made a deliberate choice to disqualify every principal in our district from consideration by introducing new qualifications that were never before required. They added a mandate for central office experience and a doctorate, fully aware that this would knock out virtually all of our principals from qualification. People who I believe the board knew had far more grassroots support from the community than the board's preferred candidate, Dr. Langford. In other words, the board chose to change the rules to clear a path. They knew that several of our principals would have drawn far more backing from staff, parents, and citizens, and so they effectively removed the competition. This decision ran directly counter to what our community actually prioritized. Because when the TSBA conducted a survey of the community, citizens ranked central office experience and having a doctorate at the bottom of the list of what they felt was important in a director. So this wasn't just a procedural shift. It was a strategic move to favor one candidate, candidate over the will of the community. Now, what about the TSBA in the process? We entrusted them to do our search, to do a fair director search instead. After receiving numerous applications, they presented us with just one candidate, Dr. Langford. And then took the unauthorized step of sending rejection letters to all the others, telling them they were no longer being considered. That alone was a breach of their role. But it gets worse. We later, or I later learned that one highly qualified candidate reached out to the TSBA to apply, and they were directly discouraged from doing so. The TSBA told the candidate that Scott Langford was already the frontrunner and implied that their application would be pointless. In my view, this is a blatant attempt to shield Dr. Langford from competition because they knew this candidate might have had far more community support. After the TSBA was removed from the process, our board chairman reopened the search and invited those who were previously rejected by the TSBA to be considered for interviews. That same candidate, who had initially been discouraged, then applied directly to the board. Instead of being fairly evaluated, two board members accused this candidate of being unprofessional and subverting the process and was ultimately disqualified. This entire chain of events reveals the truth. The search process was never legitimate. It was manipulated from the beginning to protect a predetermined outcome, not to serve the best interests of our schools and our community. Dr. Langford signed a four-year contract with us. He agreed to its terms and compensation. Now he wants to change it. On what grounds? What has he accomplished in two years that suddenly warrants a substantial raise? What did that central office get us? Last year, he made a $7.7 million mistake in the budget, one that every board member voted to approve based on misleading information. He later acknowledged the error, but instead of taking responsibility and correcting it, he turned it into a political fight and blamed the county commission, accusing them of violating public trust by not giving the schools that money. And I don't believe for a second that it was a simple mistake. If you watch the video of our meetings, it's clear that this was a calculated and manufactured political hit job on the commission. One thing that stands out to me as proof that this was intentional was, you know, I was thinking about the budget meetings last year. We were all given the pay scales. And we were given the pay schedules, and then they were taken up. And we were told that we couldn't keep them or make them public because the county commission hadn't voted on the budget yet. Well, you know what happened this year? We were given the pay schedules and the pay scales, and they were immediately made public, shared with employees. It, it was circulated on social media, all before the county voted on the budget. And that tells me that they knew. He knew there was going to be a political fight over his mistake.
Mr. King, I'm gonna let you finish your speech, but I just want to clarify. When you're saying that he knew and you're making accusations, I just want to clarify, these are your opinions.
That's exactly right.
All right, thank you.
We also knew it was a ploy because it turns out there was $143 million sitting in our reserves, and we didn't need that capital money from the county at all. Maybe that's why when I asked during the budget meeting in May of, or June of '24, if he could tell us how much was in the reserves and give us a breakdown, he began berating me in a public meeting and saying I was insulting the CFO for asking the question. Maybe the reason he did that, and this is my opinion, maybe, he refused to give an answer because if the public had known the amount of reserves, he could not have waged a political fight with the county commission over funding. Funding, he claimed, was essential to protect teacher raises, athletic facility bids, and the purchase of AED devices. I guess students were gonna not have their AED devices if the county didn't approve that funding. That was a lie. That was a complete lie. He turned that lie into a recount, rallying call. He even encouraged students to show up at a political rally, the Teachers and Bleachers Rally. Y'all remember that? Built around this false narrative where a citizen offered $10,000, a donation as a bribe to whichever school brought the most students. That's not leadership. That's exploiting children for political gain, and Dr. Langford encouraged that. And speaking of exploiting children, he also asked students to make videos of themselves about voting and send them directly to his email so that he could post them on social media, not to our district's communications department or social media coordinator, but directly to him. It's not only strange, it's inappropriate. When criticized and tried to claim people were attacking him for promoting civic engagement. But if that were true, why didn't he do the same thing for the August election or the November election? Why the March primary of all elections? Well, turns out during that time, he had stated publicly that his job was in jeopardy, that he felt threatened. Again, that's exploiting children for political gain. In my opinion, that alone is grounds for dismissal. At our last meeting, a colleague accused board member Lacy of dereliction of duty because he voted for the budget without realizing it, realizing that it included a raise for the director. But I'd like to ask my colleagues, during the budget meeting, when Mr. Lacy, when Mr. Lacy asked the question, how much is in our reserves? We were told by the director that they did not have an answer. Were you all derelict in your duty when you voted for the budget without that information? That's exactly why I didn't vote for it. Now, here's the thing. I, I don't think we can all necessarily be blamed for that. What are we supposed to tell our constituents when they ask us how much is in our, how much the schools have in reserve? Nobody on this board can give an answer because he refuses to give us that information. We've asked so many times. We're being asked to make major financial decisions without being given all the information. That's just not acceptable. That's insubordination. He works for us. He must be transparent. And he doesn't, he doesn't follow board policy, which is the voice of the board. He routinely fills positions without posting them. Our board policy requires positions to be posted for applicants. This new contract appears to give him even more freedom to continue doing that. He violated our nepotism policy by creating an office position for the wife of a principal at Westmoreland Middle School, while at the same time cutting a CDC assistant position. That, some of this is factual.
A point of order, Chairman.
He created that position for, for the wife of that principal. It's a fact.
Chairman, it's a fact.
That's a fact. Okay. It's factual. It's also factual that a CDC assistant position was cut at Westmoreland High School. A position that, in my opinion, and the opinion of many others, was desperately needed. And after a recent IEP meeting, and I have the permission to share this, it was determined that cutting that position put that student at risk. The district has since been forced to reinstate it. A position several of us fought to keep, fought hard. The employee that was, whose position was cut, think about her. She went through an unnecessary ordeal because of that decision. That is not leadership. That is chaos. And what about academic results? Since 2022, we've had an increase of recurring revenue of 80 million. What has that funding achieved? Our third through eighth grade reading proficiency is still below 50%. That means half of our students are still reading below grade level despite record funding. When I bring up the fact, like one of our speakers did, that the Witten Wisdom ELA curriculum is failing our students, I'm attacked by cabinet members. We do have a strong AP program. That serves about 15% of our high school students. But AP classes are not a clear measure of growth in ACT scores. Those students are already advanced and likely to perform well. We need to focus on the other 85%. And I don't think adding more AP classes is the answer. It's about bringing more rigor to our regular classes. We have an excellent CTE program, but we really need, our attention needs to be on replacing Witten Wisdom. More and more teachers are telling me it is not working, and they're afraid to speak up because it was handpicked by our director. It was never voted on by this board. It was imposed on the teachers and the students without board approval, without the voice of citizens we represent. And it contains inappropriate and questionable material that is no place in our classrooms. Again, that's not leadership. That's chaos. This director has not been truthful. He does not tell the truth. That's, that's not my opinion. That's a fact. He told us he didn't know how much was in the reserves. That's false. If he truly didn't know, he would not have budgeted 86 million of reserves in our budget this year. He claimed the $8 million increase in stadium bids came from moving football operations under the stands at Hendersonville High School. That was false. Most of that cost was already included in the original estimate. At Beach Stadium, he said that if the home side was moved back another four feet, the geotechnical survey would have to be redone. That is just a complete lie, folks. That's not an opinion. He also, also said moving the stadium back, stadium back another four feet would breach the contract and force the entire, the entire project to be rebid. False again. False again. I checked with the controller. He said, no, wouldn't happen. He told parents there was already plenty of room for the cheer and dance teams and that they were just misunderstood. That wasn't true either. The stadium ultimately had to be moved back six feet just to make room. He spreads misinformation and lies on social media. He said the $500,000 brown house involved principal funds, when in reality, reality, it was misallocated county money. He claimed that money was part of a trust that he managed, but it was never supposed to be in the trust to begin with. He said he couldn't release those funds until a parks plan was approved. That's false again. He lied when he said Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield voted to dissolve the Parks Board. That never happened. And he said his replacement as Director of Schools was announced at the GOP breakfast. That never happened. He also makes personal attacks. He said board member, former board member Josh Graham, quote, this was at a political event he attended, quote, "never did anything for a teacher in his life." That is a despicable lie. He falsely accused me of being involved in Millersville corruption, even though my only involvement was visiting the elementary school there. And he said I fight, quote, "I fight against safe athletic facilities," end quote. I have two kids at Beach High School, both in sports and band. Does anyone really believe I want unsafe facilities for my own children? That is a despicable lie. That's not leadership. That's chaos. And I'll close. On social media, he repeatedly ridicules public officials, parents, citizens, calling them fascists, tyrants, bottom feeders, radicals, minion mouthpieces, all because they disagree with them. This kind of conduct from the Director of Schools is unacceptable and beneath the dignity of the office. We've lost a lot of good people because of this toxic culture. What he did to Principal Dr. Kathy Vincent at Benny Bill's Elementary was despicable. Everyone in the district knows it. Every staff member, principal, they all know that that was a despicable act. She was a respected leader. She raised test scores by massive percentages and brought roughly around 30 third graders who were reading below grade level and, and worked to get them and was successfully getting them above grade level in just three months, a crash course in reading literacy. She was a champion for her staff and for her students, a principal who truly cared about her school. And what was her reward? She was demoted. She was told she was too consumed with the school. Isn't that exactly what we want in a leader? Someone who's dedicated, passionate, and focused on her students? I believe we should give Dr. Langford 30 days' notice and hire Dr. Kathy Vincent instead. Our schools need a real champion, someone who leads with integrity, not ego. Again, this is not leadership. It's chaos, and it will continue another four years if we approve this contract.
All right, so I just wanted, to my other board members, I appreciate y'all letting me bring this and have that discussion. You know, I, I think what we witnessed tonight is one of the main reasons that I'm for adding some data-driven metrics behind things because we're always gonna have, we've got 11 people up here, and everybody's gonna have a different view of the world. I, I just, I think we've got to take the emotion, or at least as much of the emotion side of the decision out of it so that we can be fair to ourselves as a board, to our superintendent, and to the community that we serve. And, and, you know, I've stated my case on it. I'm just letting you know that that's, you know, I do appreciate, I hope in the, in the very near future that we can start having that conversation so that we don't get in this same situation in another year or however long it will be. So, thanks.
Thank you. There are no other comments. You know, again, I think every board member has the right to their opinions. And we have the right to disagree with those opinions. So with that, Mr. Johnson, can we please vote on the director's contract?
Yes, just as a reminder to everybody, we're voting on approving the director's contract. A yes vote is to approve. No vote is against. And with that, Ms. Hayes?
Chairman, can everybody turn their mic on and speak into the mic when they vote?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
No.
Chairman Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of.
Absolutely disgusting.
Hey, we're gonna take a quick five minute.
Y'all vote Jim out next year.
Five minute recess. Thank you.
Consider minutes, discussion or action regarding the minutes September 23rd, 2025 regular meeting, do you have a motion to approve? Got a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, upon your board's say aye.
Upon your board's, what are we voting for, I can't hear you.
Discussion or action regarding the minutes September 23rd, 2025 regular meeting, just Meeting in order, all right, thank you. We're, consideration of minutes, discussion or action regarding minutes September 23rd, 2025 regular meeting, I have a motion to approve and I have a second. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is matters involving counsel. Executive session is not needed this evening. Comments from the attorney, moving on, reports from the director. Uh, Dr. Langford, do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, just a few brief ones. First off, thank you for the confidence in the contract extension. I just want you to know it's not something that I take lightly. I value public feedback and comments. I think there's, you know, there's value in our democracy and I think one of the bad spots that we're in right now is sitting down and listening to each other. And I think that that's something, you know, when I see our, our two kids come up and model uh, what their, their hope is for their classmates, that's, that's encouragement for us all. And I do try to take all feedback that I receive seriously. I do try to engage everybody that, that wants to talk, to sit down and talk, and I, I plan on continuing that. Yeah, I appreciate your confidence and I'm a hundred percent for accountability. I've been a part of every education reform that's tried to improve educational outcomes for students since I became an assistant principal in 2011. You know, my whole life has been lived in schools and I, I love this school system and I will continue to pour my heart in, into it. I've never shied away from accountability. Uh, I believe that I have the best team you could ever assemble and I think they do outstanding work. With regard to metrics, I think, you know, we're happy to name some and let's, let's work towards those. We just finished strategic meetings with our principals. We go through each school and, and go through their goals and what they need to support them. Uh, you, you know, and I'm happy to communicate those things with y'all. But, you know, I think that the, the biggest proof of metrics is what we've tried to share each meeting with you, whether it's a new health clinic in Portland to take care of our kids because we identified a need, whether it's the work that we've done to secure strong schools, whether it's the work that we've done to provide the best benefits package for our employees, our compensation, uh, work that we've done, you know, we continue to try to push the envelope as far and hard as we can, uh, to make things better for our kids and I will continue to do that. I'm also happy to answer any questions that you have. I appreciate the fact that it's a, it's a huge learning curve. I remember I was, last week I was at financial management over at the commission. You know, they had to approve a search firm for County Finance Director. Uh, the county finance director's leaving after a long time, it's huge shoes to fill. Uh, I was chair of financial management in 2014 when I first went on the commission and it was, uh, really neat to reflect on what stayed the same, what's changed, where we need to go next. And, um, you know, it's the same thing that, that we always want to do, is set goals, set metrics and move forward and I'm very much committed to that. I, I, that, that's enough about that. I'm happy to answer any questions. You might have them open to any metrics. I love the idea of a retreat where we set some goals. I think a lot of it is, we can share with you what we're already doing because I think we pushed the envelope really hard. Uh, I think our principals and teachers are outstanding. Uh, I think each of our department chairs are outstanding and they do tremendous work. Uh, we'd put them up against anybody. Uh, I wanted to explain, uh, there was some public comment and some of the emails we received were about the insurance holiday for employees. And I wanted to explain that a little bit because I think it's just something where benefits are hard to understand. So we are self-insured. We have, we have an insurance trust that we pay into and our employees pay for their, their benefits. We pay 80% and the employee pays 20%. And so what, what has happened is, is that Ms. Brown, you heard Ms. Brown and Mr. Bushong last week present about, uh, the quality of care that we provide and how we're constantly trying to expand services, whether that's online physical therapy, whether that's our one-to-one clinics, uh, whether that's, uh, text care, more telemedicine. We continue to try to learn and push the envelope. Really excited about the carrot program with support for, uh, women with, uh, with menopause and other, other hormonal needs. I'm very excited about the work that our team has done to put that together. One of the things that they're done, that they've done that I'm not sure came out last meeting is, uh, they have managed the plan so effectively, you know, my brother-in-law's in the healthcare industry and he and I had coffee last week and he had just come back from a medical conference and one of the things they were talking about is the largest contributor to the price of a new car is employee benefits. You go across every industry, the number one contribution is, um, it is just that. And, you know, we had a, a husband, one of our employees emailed us yesterday praising Mr. Bushong because he had just finished our, we're in open enrollment right now and he had just finished his open enrollment for health benefits and he said that his, uh, health insurance had gone up 78%. I think it gone up something like seven dollars over the last three years. And so that's, that's the testament to what Ms. Brown and her team have done, but because they've kept costs down and the investment that we made a long time ago in preventative care for, for our staff and bringing our certified and classified staff together in one insurance plan has lifted that for, for everybody. And so what's happened is, is, you know, everything works off forecast and typically your forecast is higher, I mean, typically your forecast is under with healthcare. Healthcare goes up a lot each year. While that's happened for everybody else, they've managed ours so it stays the same price. So what we are able to do, what we are asking you to do tonight, is to vote to extend a two-month tax, uh, health insurance holiday for our employees that carry our insurance. This is money that they have paid in and so rather than, rather than sit on it or leave it in the trust, we're able to give that back to them, uh, because of the, the success in the plan, but also their contribution. So it's a way to reward our employees for something that's come about through good management because it's a lot on, on them also because they participate in a lot of wellness stuff. Like we all go through health coaching, we, uh, do a lot of preventative care, they stay on you. If you don't get your colonoscopy, they remind you 35 times and 36 times, I'm gonna go get mine. But, um, sorry Amanda, um, but, um, it, it's a way for us to give back to our employees and I can tell you, we did this last year in December and January, our recommendation this year is for November, December. I can tell you that the number of, uh, thank yous that we got from our employees about how meaningful it was to receive this money back around the holidays was, was huge. So I just wanted to clarify that. It's not something, you know, a, a few of the emails indicated that this was like an extra perk for our employees. This is just refunding to them money that they, um, money they've already paid in. It's, you know, it's like saying we have too much and we're just gonna give some, bring us some back to our employees. Um, yeah, the second thing, I, I don't know if we want me, Mr. Brinney, do you want me to take, I think, no, no, no. Uh, the Innovation Center, you know, I want to be able to give a much larger update when we have a little bit more time. I know we still have some things to talk about that are gonna take some time tonight. So I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna take up too much time with my report. I didn't want to ask, I don't want to put, uh, Ms. Brown and Ms. Skinner on the spot, but we had the opportunity to go visit the Williamson County Entrepreneurship Center today and spend the morning with their leadership team and the work that they've done. Uh, their Entrepreneur Center has been running for a couple of years. It's very exciting, the work that they've done. It's really beneficial for us to see, uh, what they put together for entrepreneurship. We're attempting to do, um, that plus some more things at the Innovation Center, but it's really good. They're outstanding, uh, group of educators that have connected really well into the business and industry community in Williamson County. So before I wrap up with some things, I wanted to see if Ms. Skinner and, uh, Ms. Brown wanted to share any of their insights.
Well, for me, it was, it was a lot of things that we've talked about that we got to see even in real live action, um, on a smaller scale because we think ours will be bigger and better. But, um, it was really cool to see that the possibilities that are before us and, and the things that they have done with their students are pretty amazing.
So they actually had students in the building, uh, participate, actively participating in their programs and we got to see, you know, all the things that we're discussing and visualizing and, and planning for. We got to see some of that in, you know, the, the real machine that we're, Chase is looking at and, um, and those kids, uh, presenting and all the things. So, uh, it was, it was super impressive there. They have a very impressive program, um, and it was exciting to see those kids excited and being a part of that, um, and being really engaged in that process. And so it really excites me, um, for our students and our, 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 uh, schools. So it's really, uh, for us, it's gonna be awesome to be a part of such a, uh, innovative thing and, and they're so been so helpful for us too. Like, I mean, I'm getting his email, I'm emailing him questions, it's, it's a very good partnership. We really appreciate their support, so.
Yeah, he had a lot of student stories where parents were like, I couldn't get my kid to get up and get out of bed and go to school and like this has changed their trajectory and thank you so much for, uh, just the stories that come along with the work that they've been doing were just, they give you chills bumps.
Ms. Skinner, could you share a little bit about the competition that we saw where they made the trip to the thrift shop?
Yes. So it's called, they made an upcycle store. So they had a budget where they gave every student $12 and they went to Goodwill and they could pick three items that they had to upcycle into something else. Then they'd come back and make a pitch deck presentation to get more funding to replicate this upcycled project and then they sold it in their upcycle store. The really cool thing about it was the student received that funding right back to their, to them. It went straight to the student.
Yeah, I thought it was funny, some of the professional skill parts that came out is they said that, you know, that is big event and people came in and they bid it on the stuff and so the winner on the bid, uh, the student goes, I can't text, I've gotta like call and talk and they said yes. And so they got off the phone and they said, hey, you didn't tell them how to pay. So he called them back and said, I need you to Venmo me. And then hung up again and said, hey, you've gotta tell them how to Venmo you. And they said, to be able to coach, I mean, it seems simple, but to be able to coach a kid through, you know, you still do physically have to talk to people sometimes was, was really amazing. I thought another funny thing is they got connected in, so they have something that we're gonna work into our Innovation Center where regardless of the different programs that we have, there's gonna be one day a week where they're all gonna work together and they'll be infused with the, kind of the core values of the Innovation Center, you know, uh, how do we appropriately and responsibly use AI, community and civic virtue, uh, bringing together community mentors in the field with, uh, with specific knowledge to, to provide to help them accomplish it. Uh, but they said that, uh, they got the Titan C-suite a couple of years ago to come out and speak to their, all their entrepreneur kids. And they were back in the conference room and they said, you think these kids can help us? And, you know, the guy that runs the center said, how thick is your skin? Because if you ask them, they will tell you. And so they said, we're, we're thick skinned. So they went out there and they said, people were giving them some feedback. They wanted to, their problem of practice was they've got a generational problem in the NFL right now. Young, high school age kids are not going to NFL games anymore, uh, in big numbers. Some of that may be the success of the Titans, but this was, we were a little better when that was going on. But, uh, anyway, they go out and ask kids why they're not coming. And some kids would give other answers and he said, there's this one kid that we kind of let into the program, but we weren't real confident about him, about our decision. And he said, he raised his hand and he said, your TikTok's garbage. And he said, here's a Steve McNair, we don't care. Eddie George, we don't care. Derek Henry, we don't care anymore. But now this, this alligator with a football in his mouth, this is the stuff we watch. And so the Titans stepped back from it and they challenged them, they said, we're gonna give you a game, we're gonna give you a thousand tickets for you to sell, we're gonna put you in charge of the pregame, the halftime and post-game entertainment, the commercials in between that aren't network, uh, we're gonna give you all of that. They sold out the tickets in 48 hours. And then they created a, uh, they created a, uh, the first in the NFL, a student's, uh, section at an NFL game with a thousand kids in there. Uh, and that, that's led to other partnerships with the Titans about, uh, decorating the shoes that the Titans wear and then auction them off for charity. Really an amazing job that they're doing in Williamson County, but it was cool for us to see because it's a, it's a lot of the ways our minds have been going and, you know, not only not to have to reinvent the wheel, but just to create, uh, strategic partnerships, which we do quite often with Williamson County. Uh, really, really a fun day and, and really encouraging. I wanted to share some of those stories. We'll be able, hopefully in a month or two, to be able to put together a real big package of, of everything that's going on. Part of that, uh, you know, just as a morsel was what, uh, our two young women presented tonight. Understand that that whole program, I mean, it's so funny how it works. We had been trying to think, how do we get student voice into shaping the programs that we have here? And they, they came up to me and started pitching their idea and my first inclination was to approve it immediately. And then Amanda told me that they'd been working really hard on a pitch deck, that I needed to see their pitch deck before I said yes, that I couldn't just jump in. And then Amanda told me that they'd been working really hard on a pitch deck, that I needed to see their pitch deck before I said yes, that I couldn't just jump in and be all in. And, you know, it's been cool because we've had Katie and Frankie and Amanda have worked with them to hone their presentation, to put their slide deck together. Other cabinet members have met with them and given them feedback, they presented to the principals and got feedback, they've talked to other students, they were very actively engaged in the recruiting of those students, Frankie, were you gonna say something?
Well, it's kinda off topic now, but I wanted to share that the Entrepreneurship Center is twenty-five thousand square feet and ours is sixty thousand square feet, so the potential is like, and he named that like several times today about how jealous he was.
He was very jealous about our proposal.
Yeah, yeah, our, our students have already been going out, just started Two Young Women tonight, they're, they're already broadcasting this out to the community. They are gonna build a website and app, they will project manage it, we're gonna partner with Val State and Val State coding and web design students are gonna build the actual site with our students serving as project managers. The students will get a dual enrollment credit in Lean Six Sigma with certification in Lean Six Sigma for project management, they'll, they'll complete another course focused on Patrick Lencioni's Advantage and Working Genius. We've received a class that Patrick Lencioni's team designed that will be able to integrate with Val State. So it's two very useful, you know, certifications and college courses that they will receive. And then, you know, I just think with community service requirements for Tennessee Promise going from eight hours to sixteen hours, their driving thing was they identified that there was a dearth of opportunities for students to do meaningful community service and they wanted to create an opportunity to make it easier. That has led them to other conversations about ways that they can do some things to scale. Mr. Evans, you mentioned, you know, continuity and moving on, one of the things that they talked about is once they get this built out and identify some partners in the community, to be able to look, that we have about two thousand, twenty-one hundred kids a year looking for these hours, their senior year. Others in various stages, freshman, sophomore, junior year for National Honor Society, Beta Club, different things like that. It's really, really exciting work and I want to commend especially, you know, all of our team, but I know Frankie and Katie have been kinda helping them and then that's gonna be hardwired into the Innovation Center because it hits so closely the different things that we want our kids to take away. And that's my report.
Mr. Evans?
I just want a motion to extend the meeting, we're getting close, we still have a lot of things on the agenda, so just wanna make sure.
Second.
Second, got a motion to extend the meeting, another hour is allowed, got a second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, wait back, Mr. Lancaster, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I, I really kinda wanted to pause that, but I guess I'll approve it.
Awesome.
I mean, it's, you know, it gets nine o'clock, I'm about ready to go to bed, but anyway, the employee medical holiday.
Hey, I, I will say, if you've got questions about that, it is on the agenda, it's item two, so.
This is more just to the writer, I mean, it's not anything about, like how, I just wanna make, are we communicating to the employees that, hey, this may not always happen? I just wanna make sure like, you know, I've been in a boss where you've like, hey, I gave it this year and I had, we could do it next year, but then, you know, time gets tough and you can't do it and, but employees start expecting it. I just wanna make sure we are really communicating that, hey, this may not always, I'm a hundred percent glad that it is available and, and we, you know, managed it well, I just wanna make sure we don't get that.
One hundred percent.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is new business discussion or action regarding calendar committee recommendation for twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, Ms. Britney?
I'd like to move to approve the committee alternative recommendation one.
I just need a motion. I've got Ms. Britney, her light was on. Second. So I've got a, I've got a, I've got, her light was on, she was, she was speaking, she made a motion. So if you wanna make an amendment, you can make an amendment, so I've got a motion, I've got a second, that opens up discussion on the, that makes, that opens up discussion on the calendar. Could we please get an explanation on the, the changes to the calendar based on feedback from our, our study session?
Yeah, the, the feedback, Mr. Daniels, was after the feedback from the community from the meeting and everything was to have it listed on the calendar as Christmas slash winter and Easter slash spring. And then we moved one day, there was a lot of conversation last time about the, we've got that election primary in August of twenty-seven on a Thursday, so kids would go to school for two days then be off for Election Day and come back on Friday, so we would move, we would move that election, or excuse me, that day from before spring, or the Friday before spring break in spring to the Friday following the Election Day in August, and you can see that there on the calendar. We asked Dr. Gahn to communicate with the committee for feedback about what they thought about those proposed changes, seventy-seven percent approved the change and twenty-three percent disapproved the change.
So again, this was based on feedback from our last study session and the committee has, as you said, supported the change that we'll be voting on tonight. So, with that being said, comments, discussion, Ms. Britney?
I just wanted to share that a big part of the feedback that we got from, or that I got when I talked to my constituents was around that first week and how it was structured, I went ahead and shared this alternative calendar and I got very positive feedback on this from, in particular, teachers, they appreciated the the changes that we made and the compromises that, we heard what they had to say and responded to it. So I just wanna thank everybody who was able to put this together, our teachers, the, the ones that have spoken to me, appreciate it.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yeah, regardless of which calendar we end up choosing or voting on, I would like to, I guess, make a motion that we change the name of one of those administrative days, I've got mine as Administrative Day Two, which is on August third on either Calendar Option One or Calendar Option One A. To be renamed or specified as an Administrative Day Teacher-Teacher Prep Day and this can even be a flex day, that's one feat, or let me actually make my motion first and then we'll, sorry, can put my horse behind the cart or cart for the horse, whatever, designating it as a board-recognized day for teachers to have dedicated time in our classrooms to prepare for the new school year, that's the motion, so.
So is that, is that August the third Administrative Day Two that you're speaking about? Okay, I've got a motion, I, I just wanna clarify before we get a second, do I, do I have a second?
I, as a motion maker, I'm willing to second that and pull it up to the original motion.
Okay, yep, and that was, I believe, what you discussed during our study session?
Yeah, the only, you know, in the study session I just said, hey, let it be that day, got feedback from teachers who were mostly, I think, all in favor of it. The problem, some of them are like, it's like, hey, by August third, we already have to have our classrooms ready. I looked at some what other, what some other districts do. And again, this is all designed to, you know, recognize the, the amount of time that teachers have to spend over the summer getting their classrooms ready for that first day of school and putting a devoted designated time on our schedule to reflect that. So what other, you know, what other districts do is they make that a flex day so that if a teacher comes in in July and gets her room ready or, or his room ready for, you know, they just say, tell the principal like, hey, this is when I can, did that, my room is ready and, you know, they're, they're good for that day.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Just have a clarification question, you'd say Administrative Day One or Two?
Two, two, yeah, is it the August the third, no, I'm sorry, Administrative Day, no, yeah, August third, sorry.
August third, yes.
My glasses aren't on and I'm old.
Again, this is something like, every year, the biggest feedback that we get from teachers is like, there is just not enough time and different schools do it different ways, so.
Yeah, let, let me just ask a question, I mean, this is listed as an admin day, so whether we flex it or not could be a future board decision. I would really like, cause here, here's my concern is like if I'm a new principal, for instance, I may need both those days because I'm rolling out new things, new procedures and things like that. You're putting that principal in a really tough spot if all the other schools are flexing that day. I'm not opposed to teachers having all the, but I would like for us to have a little bit of time to put something together and we're not really talking about making a fundamental change to the calendar. We're just talking really about, like, my recommendation would be is this something that we could, that we could come back to and visit and let, let me get my team to look at it and talk to some principals. We've got a principal meeting coming up and, and see what their thoughts are because it's gonna be, you know, usually what we've tried to do is leave our schools with the autonomy to manage those administrative days at the school level. And I'm a little concerned about removing some of that autonomy from our principals.
Mr. Lancaster, would you be open to that if we added that to a study session on a specific date in the new year or?
I guess my, my only question is like if we, I just don't want us to go down this, this thing where we forget about it and it doesn't come back and I'm not saying that's the purpose.